Good morning. Now we'll begin our second hearing for this committee. And I guess before we do that, I'll introduce the committee. I'm Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, Chair of this committee and also Vice President of the Council and again represent the 6th District. And to my immediate left is Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilwoman Danielle McCray, and she's also representative of the 2nd District. And to her far left is sponsor of the bill, Councilman Bill Henry.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also to my far right, member of the committee, Councilman Robert Stokes and representative of the 12th District. And to his right is Councilman Eric Costello, Representative of the 11th District and member of the committee. And also to my immediate right is staff of the committee, Sam Johnson.
Thank you.
And at this point, we'll go ahead and move on to hear Bill Number 19-0169R for investigative hearing Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office for the purpose of inviting the Chief of the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office to report to the City Council on the effectiveness of meeting minority business enterprises and women's business enterprises participation goals. This bill was introduced on October 7, 2019. The bill was sponsored by Councilman Bill Henry. And at this point, we'll hear comments from the sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief with my opening remarks because they're all in the recitals for the resolution. The most recent biennial audit found some problems in the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, and I thought it would be appropriate rather than to stress that or try to have that conversation at the Biennial Audit Oversight Commission since no one from Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office was at that hearing. I thought it made more sense to just ask the council to hold a separate hearing so we could ask some questions about how the office is working, how it has worked in the past, and specifically how the findings of the biennial audit are being addressed. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
And then also, we have representing the Mayor's Office, Matt Stegman. And Mara James from the Law Department, I mean, I'm sorry, Finance.
James Knighton from the Comptroller's Office.
From the Comptroller's Office, James Knighton. And Tamara Brown representing the...
Oh, I'm the Chief.
Gotcha. We'll start with agency reports, and we'll start with the city solicitor.
So, I'm not sure where the rest of the Law Department is.
Is someone gonna come from the Law Department?
Well, I am here from the Law Department.
Okay.
But the other part that you're wait... I don't...
So, they did give a favorable report. Did you just wanna...
They just look at legal conditions to make that statement.
Okay.
It's not a legal issue.
Any representative from the employees' retirement system? Matt?
I don't see any in the room, but they did issue a written report, and they stand by the contents of that report.
And they basically have no comment, I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Fire and Police Retirement System?
I believe that the ERS sent the one report to cover all the various retirement systems.
Department of Finance, Mara?
The Department of Finance stands by our report.
And that is...
That we support having this hearing to talk about it. We, the Bureau of Procurement, works with the, with MBO to do trainings for certified businesses and ensure that we are meeting the goal and including them in our online procurement system that we run. And the Department of Finance is also works, is working with MBO around some of the findings in the audit around the performance measures.
Okay. So, you have a team here, so we'd like to get testimony from you now.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Madam Vice Chair, Councilman Henry, thank you for introducing this bill. So, we have an opportunity to highlight a wonderful office I'm very proud of. So, I have my team with me. I know that it was for me to be here at the hearing, but I have my esteemed team. We have one team member missing, so part of the presentation will be introduction of my team.
Okay.
I'm just gonna get started. I have a small presentation just to potentially answer some of the questions, trying out some new technology. I think it's gonna work, so I'll go right into the presentation, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay.
And we do have Kaylin Young here representing the Office of the President.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Far right there.
Okay, so, again, our team consists of, right now, we actually have five members as of about two weeks ago. Oh, sorry. LaShella Miller joined as our, as my acting, well, she's my deputy chief, and Wendy Dabney is an investigator with my team. Stephen Campbell is a Program Compliance Officer 1, and Shirley Davis, who isn't here, is our secretary. So, that's our team. We were a team of four for about, since about January of 2019, so we're happy to have the fifth member. In previous fiscal years, we actually had a staff of seven, and the last fiscal year there was a reduction of two. So, this is the full, this is our full budget of staff right now. So, I did wanna map out some history and the program. I have some copies here, 'cause I know it's a little difficult to see. I can hand out for you. I know that Councilman Costello often asks the difference between our office and the Mayor's Office, and so this will hopefully help, and so you won't have to ask that question anymore. Can you hand out some copies?
A little better? You can give them to, you can give them to... Sam, I think you have them.
Okay, so it's just a little history of the program, starting in 1978 with the state of Maryland introducing a program to include minorities in contracting at the state level. We moved along, 1979, where the Baltimore City Solicitor at the time introduced a program. We kinda go through that process, and you'll see, you know, there's the Crowson decision, which pretty much led to us having disparity studies. And so with those disparity studies, we have to show that there is an actual disparity because this is a race-conscious program. It's a strict scrutiny, a program that requires strict scrutiny in the law, so we have to have a very narrowly tailored legislation in order to meet strict scrutiny. And so, yes, Judge Davis, who was our solicitor today, actually issued a TRO on the office and then closed the office in 2000 based on the MBO Office of Baltimore City not meeting that strict scrutiny level. So, I bring that to your attention to say that a lot of changes I'm making in the office now is so that, you know, I wanna make sure we meet that strict scrutiny level. The program can be closed down at any time if we are challenged by a case. In 2000, it was closed based on the contract, utility contractors. They brought a case against the city because they did not think that the minority goals were fair, in a sense, and so there was a favorable rule. So, we have to, the guidelines in Article 5, Subtitle 28, having the disparity studies, which I came to you all, I think in June, to get an extension so that we can get that disparity study, it's very necessary. And so a lot of the changes I'm making is to ensure that we are meeting that level so that our office does not get closed down and start a trend across the nation where they're plugging holes in the programs and closing offices that are doing such good work, so. So, the next slide is gonna show you some of the responsibility of our office. I think that the idea is that we just certify businesses. That is a small fraction of the work that we do. We do compliance on all the city contracts, $50,000 or more. Article 5, Subtitle 28, also states that we should be included in the process of contracts under $50,000. You're supposed to go to a minority business, particularly for minorities, for commodities first, and then it would go out, you know, for bid or whatever, what the case is, and we're supposed to write off who you contacted. There's some processes and procedures and things that we have not done in a few years that I wanna start implementing. But I wanna emphasize that we do not just certify businesses. We do, compliance has become a major piece, contract compliance, and that's where we've been finding a lot of issues and trying to rectify those issues because we can certify, I always say, we can certify 5,000 businesses, but if they're not getting work on city contracts, it's just, it's mute. There's no, there's no point in having the program. The whole point is for them to get business with the city. So, we are constantly monitoring contracts. I have an investigator here, I have one, we previously had two. She investigates people that are applying to make sure they're in the market area, to make sure a woman actually owns the business. Sometimes that requires an interview, so she does a lot of work for us, and I'm very thankful for that. And so some of our clients, I've listed them because we deal with pretty much every agency, these are some of our major clients. So, next up, I wanted to show you all the numbers, how we're doing the effectiveness. I guess this kinda answers some of the, some of the questions. Okay, so, right now, we're at all-time high for certified businesses. We've got 1,522 businesses certified to date, and you can see the trend where we've moved up about 31% since 2015. So, and I can stand by that number. Well, every day it changes. I think we added probably some new vendors yesterday after I did these numbers, so every day that number does change. And so that was a significant increase, I believe, which is a benefit. We, Wendy conducted about 134 investigations in fiscal year 19, so that's just to tell you how much work is getting done. We received, in fiscal year 19, we received 703 applications, and out of those, we actually touched and went through 591 of those applications. And out of 591 applications, about 380 did not require an email, a follow-up, they weren't missing any documentation. So, when we're measured on how fast we certify business, it doesn't, it doesn't consider having to ask someone for a license, an asbestos license, because we're gonna list them in the directory for providing asbestos services, we have to make sure they have a license to provide that service. And I found that we weren't doing that particularly with renewals. We weren't going back and looking at the license. We weren't going back and thoroughly looking at the taxes to make sure there was no ownership changes. The team has done some training on entities, you know, what a corporation should file versus an LLC, what a single LLC should file versus a partnership, you know? So, we're, I'm educating the team, and I think they're getting it. We're just doing a lot of things a bit different than we were before. So, the process does take a little longer. We are the only jurisdiction still using paper, and so we have paper applications coming in, so you can imagine the work that it takes for us to go through 703 applications about a year, so. And that includes renewals, and that includes M dot certified companies. So, it's just a lot of work being done. We are doing compliance on about, I can't see my own slides, it's, here, on about 198. We do about 198 compliance reviews. That's a compliance review when a bid is entered, and we review them for the MBO requirements, Article 5, Subtitle 28. There may be an increase in a contract, there may be an extension, and so we also do that, and we're doing more thorough compliance, which I'll talk about a little bit later. So, that's just some of the good work we're doing. We also monitor TIF and grant-funded projects, like Port Covington is a huge project that we're gonna have to manage to ensure that they're meeting the goals. So, just to talk about, again, some more of the changes that we've been making in the office, we've increased vigilance with compliance reviews. We actually now have, I have a CityBuy account, we have a Core Integrator account where we verify how much a prime has been paid. We reach out to the subs to verify they've received that payment. We do deal with a lot of payment disputes as well, so we try to mitigate that. But with a staff of five, it's a little difficult to do with a lot of, all the contracts that we manage. We actively engage with prompt payment efforts. Councilman Stokes gets a lot of emails from me because I know that he had a bill, and so I'm trying to support him and bring his, to his attention when there is a problem with prompt payment, 'cause that affects the MBE and WBE. If they're not being paid, if the prime isn't paid, then the MBE and WBE is not gonna get paid, so we do engage there as well. I updated all of the applications. They're online, we had like a scanned form that, if you had a new application, an applicant would have to write, hand-write. So, it's just a PDF fillable form. We're hoping to get the technology where we can have an online application form, a process. That bid, I think, has been, it has been awarded, and I'm working on managing that with the Wage Commission also needed that same compliance software. So, hopefully, that will mitigate some of the time it takes us to manage applications because if you upload it and you're missing a document, you can't complete your app, excuse me, application. But right now, anyone can submit anything, and we just have to constantly call and email, and that takes quite a bit of time.
So, you are in dialogue with the IT office, and, I mean, there is gonna be progress in updating, you know, I'm still kind of in that spot where you do 700 and some things by hand.
By hand, yes.
But are you in dialogue with IT?
So, it's not, it's, so the city, when I came in, I heard about this software that we were supposed to get for years. Apparently, the bid was sitting with Procurement. Make a long story short, we got it moved along, the price proposal was opened, and it was awarded to B2G Now. Now, this is a vendor that you can do the certificate, the state uses that for applications, you can upload your application, and they also use it, some jurisdictions use it for compliance. But each module has a cost to it, so we have to keep cost in mind. So, as far as compliance, I have called the state to ask if we could use what they're using to do compliance on contracts. I'm working with the state right now because that's an in-house product that they've developed, and so it's going through an approval process. I don't think we should have to pay and reinvent the wheel or pay for that module. If we can find something comparable that the state is using that would save the city and the state ultimately some money. So, I actually called their IT department, they were pretty happy. You know, I tried to sell it to them, like, "Look, we're just gonna save the state money, you know, we should be able to use your system." So, I think we're gonna be able to work through that. I'm still going through that for compliance. But as far as the applications, we're working on that. It will take time to migrate everything over. To my understanding, the vendor takes about two years or so to get everything, a year or two. It's just like implementing any new system. So, we'll be doing it by hand for a while. I think that we could ask other jurisdictions for some funding because the Baltimore City schools use our database, Baltimore County does use our database, so I don't know how we can vet that, but they don't have an office, they don't fund an office, they rely on our office to certify folks, and then when they have bids, they use our office. So, when the ransomware attack occurred, their systems were up and ours were down, and so when they had bids coming out, we had to go, our secretary, the whole staff had to go to the file cabinets, pull out to see if someone is certified, just not to hold up another jurisdiction's bidding. It was, it was quite laborious, and we'd get calls from vendors that wanted to use a minority company, and we certainly didn't want them to not have that opportunity for business, so we had to go through each file, paper file. We couldn't just log in to see that they were certified. They couldn't do that themselves. So, a lot of other jurisdictions do rely on our office to certify businesses, and they use that, including like the city of Philadelphia, a lot of people use our certification, so. And so, where were we? We implemented an SBA size standard in the program in April, and that, I found that we were using somewhat of an arbitrary numbering system where some of the businesses that we had certified were quite large. I graduated a company that was grossing $50 million that was in our program, and I think that's just a little large, and it's hard for a small business to compete. So, we're modeling, after the state, we're using the SBA size standard that went to the Board of Estimates on April 10th, and that's the first time. The code says we're supposed to do that every year, and we had not done that, to my findings, since 2010, so we are, we're good there. And so that's eliminated, and we're actually just graduating companies by the NACE code. And so we also are introducing the NACE code into our directory. I think that's gonna be live tomorrow, where vendors were having problems finding MBEs and WBEs because our system, it just wasn't up to date. So, I've worked with B sit, and that's gonna be updated sometime this week. So, we're actively engaging to reduce bid protests, and our bidding documentation can be a little complicated, training the vendors, training the bidders, the primes, you know, how to fill out the forms, 'cause that costs the city money. When there is a bid related to our office, we're gonna go with the second or third lowest bidder, and so that ends up costing the city money. So, we're taking that. I do think that should be a performance measure, how many protests are related to MBO, because that reflects on how we are training the bidders, and we're, I think we should be responsible for that. So, strict adherence to the Baltimore City Code. Anyone, if you heard, I'm very much a rule follower, and I'm very much about the strict adherence to the code. That's all I reference, that's all I talk about, I carry it with me. I've redlined it, there's a lot of changes that need to be made, it's beat up, but when I fix it, it will be fixed, and it will, it will be a really good law. So, I want to also highlight that for the first time in the history of the program, we did penalize a vendor on September 11th for not being compliant with Article 5, Subtitle 28, where they were not using their MBE. And we got the release of retainage to release the funds, and that's also something that we do. We sign off on release of retainage to see that the prime has met the goal, and oftentimes, we'd get a half excuse, oh, you know, this or that happened. We go through, Wendy verifies, I may verify, we make sure that's the truth. So, I did not sign off on that release of retainage, and we did penalize someone for the first time. It was $40,000, and so I'm very proud of the work that we did, but I hope that we can be more proactive because that means an MBE or WBE did not receive the money they were supposed to receive, so. Okay, so now we're gonna get to the audit. And so the audit, there were four findings for our office, and finding number one was that the, we had inaccurate performance measures. Sorry, I think that's finding, yeah, that's finding number one. So, the recommendation was for us to establish procedures for reviewing the data submitted to BBMR and to ensure reliability, completeness, and accuracy of the data. And so the, what we're doing, we're conducting regular internal audits on how many companies we have certified, so we do our own internal audits, I'm auditing the records. I think there were some duplicate certifications that we were counting back in that, during that audit period, and so we were using a spreadsheet right now to track everything, which isn't ideal, but that's what we have. And so I do run some audits within the spreadsheet in order to ensure that we're not counting So, finding number two is that we didn't meet our 2016 target for the number of applications approved, and the recommendation was that we change performance measures to the number of new applications approved. And so that was actually, we did change the performance measure, and we do, that was actually changed, so I was working on that for fiscal year 19. The other finding was that we had inconsistent 2017 performance target, and there was a BBMR action there, and that's just a matter of working with BBMR to ensure that the targets that we are looking at are the targets that they set, and so I think that was kind of a minor irregularity, although it matters, I think it's just a communication error there. And lastly, that we did not list our waivers, and actually, at the time I came in last May as a Program Compliance Officer, I did note that we weren't doing that, so I started running another spreadsheet just tracking the waivers. And to date, it's a simple spreadsheet that Stephen and I, we were the only two people doing compliance. You know, we just enter the waiver, the date that we received, the date that we turned it around, how much the waiver is for also matters, and the date that we return it to the agency, so we are tracking them in a spreadsheet. Again, I'm trying to maybe develop a database or something that's a little easier for us to track, but we are certainly, you know, waivers do matter, and even the waivers, when a contract is awarded and a prime asks to reduce the goal for whatever reason, we certainly are keeping track of that. So, I think what you'll start seeing is, you know, I'm big on technology, as I'm trying here, and so I, that's my background, it's more so, I'm more inclined with technology than law, so I think that there will be a lot of big differences in the office just implementing the technology. I don't believe in reinventing the wheel. I do a lot of lessons learned with other jurisdictions, if they have technology they can share. I certainly reach out, and the state will tell you, I'm not afraid to ask, if that can just have something for free. So, I do my best to manage the office. There's been a lot of changes, and I thank my team for bearing through that with me because I'm, try to be very detail-oriented and, and as we should, because this is a very important office, so. With that, I will close and answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the committee?
I mean, if you have other, if you have questions from the committee first, I...
No, there's none, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, thank you very much. That was, that was a great presentation. I myself struggle with prezi, so I appreciate, I appreciate what you were able to do there. I'm almost not sure where I wanna start, but I do wanna get some things out of the way first. First of all, I applaud your willingness to reach out to the state to see about using their systems. I think that that's a great idea. Frankly, I wish more agencies would take that kind of initiative because we probably do have a lot of things that the state is doing a better job of dealing with technologically. And the one, the one thing I would ask is, in your, in your outreach to the state, were you keeping BCIT in the loop with that request?
Absolutely. So, once, at first, I had to reach out to figure out what they were using. I went online, and I downloaded all of their compliance forms, and I realized I couldn't change them because they had them locked. So, I was just gonna try to use the spreadsheet and give it to the agencies so they can report to us. And then I called the beast, their B sit, well, I called the manager of their MBE team, and then she gave me the number to their IT team. And so, yes, I've spoken to our Law Department IT individual, I do know that we may need a server, so once I know what the requirement is, then I will go to B sit and see if we are able to facilitate that. So, I have discussed it extensively with the state. Upon approval, that they can give us this database, then I will certainly work with B sit, see if there's a server, do we need to pay for a server, and what the process is. So, absolutely, we'd talk to them about bringing that in, I would have to.
That's, that's great, thank you again. Also, I was, I was struck by your reverence for the code and your willingness to find the things in the code that need to be fixed, and I would love to have a follow-up conversation with you online about that. I share that joint reverence and willingness to make things different and better. The, I did wanna ask a couple specific questions about the findings. In the, in the finding number three, and you touched on this a little bit, but if you could go, expand on it, the, what is the status of improving the control processes for the condition in which the number of applications approved did not agree with the supporting list from the new application approvals provided?
Okay, so when I did look into that finding, I think that one of the, they had a duplicate, there was a duplicate business.
We're gonna need to pause for just a second for some housekeeping details.
Okay. Because we have kind of the exact votes here due to one absence, we, we're gonna go ahead and take the vote on this, on this resolution, and then we'll get back to... to go ahead and take the vote on this, on this resolution and then we'll get back to... So do I have a motion, and we're doing this because one of the voting members has an appointment. Do I have a motion to move Bill 19-0169R?
So moved.
So moved by Costello, second.
Second.
Second by McCray. And this has been favorable. Chair Middleton, yes. Vice Chair McCray?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilman Reissinger is absent. He did call as an emergency at home. And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. So this bill will definitely move to the full council for second read on January 13th, Is there a motion to reconvene the hearing?
So moved.
So moved by Costello. And now we'll go back to Councilman Henry's questioning and comments.
Thank, thank.
Second.
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
And second, I'll go back, a second, the vote, the move was made by Councilman Costello, second by Councilman Stokes, and we'll reconvene. We have to go back and...
Or you can just say without objection.
Without objection, we're reconvening to, back to Bill number 19-0169R.
Okay.
And Councilman Henry, sponsor of the bill, will proceed.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, this is a reminder that last term, I suggested practice with investigative or informational hearings where the whole point of the resolution is that you're going to hold a hearing. So as soon as you've convened the hearing, you've actually done what the resolution says to do. So I suggest that we just always do those votes right away at the beginning of a hearing. That way, you don't have any quorum issues with the, with the, with the members. But you were talking about the control processes.
Right. So actually, the FY19 performance was due this week, or last week, for our office. And so an example of what we're doing is I go through the spreadsheet and there's a, you know, you can find duplicates. It's something you have to run with in the spreadsheet. I can't remember the name of it. So I think just, just technical knowledge of what we're using helps where the duplicate was an issue before. It's not an issue now because I do run reports to make sure a company, because sometimes someone will send in an application and then they'll send in something else and our secretary may log it again. So I do run reports to make sure there's no duplicates. And if identified, of course, I delete it. But I have, I think I spent quite a few hours back in the file room going through our log, that we have a log where we track when the application comes in, who reviewed it, how long it took them to review, like what actions were taken. And so again, the detail in me did not allow me to submit my FY19, I will admit, budget performance on time because it wasn't right. And so just knowing that the numbers were not accurate, I ran a number of, a number of formulas within the spreadsheet to ensure that they are accurate. And it's just a matter of going through and making sure that application was actually received in that fiscal year or that time. And it's, it's just a detail and it takes time, but you know, they will tell you, I'm here seven days a week, so, and I work unreal hours. But that's how it gets done. Unfortunately, with a staff like this and no technology, it takes a lot of hours to get things accurate.
Well, I want to thank you for that and also for the fact that I did not, I did not have a grasp of the size of your office before this presentation. So I'm finding that very educational also in terms of putting some of the work and some of the findings in perspective. Moving on to finding six, the, I'm sorry, did I skip? I'm sorry. Nope, I skipped finding four. Which was the condition that MWBOO did not meet its fiscal year 2016 target for the number of applications approved. The target had been 300. The actual listed is 106. I have two questions about that. Oh, wait, maybe, is that, I'm trying, I'm looking at the PREZI, the sheet from the PREZI presentation. Where it says that in 2016, there were what appears to be 1,137 certified businesses.
Yes.
Which is a, which is 24 less than the previous year.
Okay.
So I'm trying to reconcile the 106 applications approved with the 24 fewer total businesses. And can you help me out by sort of explaining that story?
Okay, so I can attest to 2016, 2017, or 2018 numbers, but what I can tell you is the database constantly changes. A company can be decertified, which I have found myself decertifying a number of companies. A company may not renew their application, so there's a two-year renewal period. And if they don't renew within the two years, their, and their application is kind of dead at that point. We give them a year and then we remove them from the database. So even though there may have been an increase in new applications.
If you're taking off.
The number is, if we're taking some off and add, you know, it's, it's not just a pile on. There are some companies that are removed from the system. So the ones that I discussed that were too large, that graduated, they have been removed. And even though we received a lot of new, it's, it's not going to match, line up one by one. You can't look at 2018 and then look at 2019 and just add the new because a number of companies have been closed in our directory, so.
Have you talked to finance about whether tracking the decertification number should be a performance measure?
Absolutely. I, when I was working on FY19, I saw that all we really tracked was the new applications. And that's not reflective of what the office does. So you will see in FY19, I've broken it down to how many new applications were received, how many were from the state, how many were from just new application, applicants, totally new packages, how many were denied, how many were decertified. So I, I'm broken it down, which is why, very late submitting, because I, I did a much more detailed report than I had to work with from the previous year. So it just took some time.
It, it looks like, okay, so this is, I guess this is where I'm going to have trouble, I'm going to have trouble asking this question based on the fact that I don't have your decertification numbers. But, so, I'm, is, is there anything that tracks how many applications you've reviewed each year and how many applications you've, you've, hmm, no, I'm not, yeah.
How much we've received versus how much we actually got to?
I'm beginning to wonder if we should be asking for applications approved as a performance metric when the real question is applications, you know, how many do you complete reviewing of the ones you receive?
So it's, I know the slides are hard to see. I'm really just working with them. So there were, we received, I think you'll see on the top, very small, we received 703 in FY19. Out of the 703, we actually reviewed 594 within that fiscal year. So that's the type of detail that I'm adding to the report, is the ones we actually got to. Now, that doesn't mean they were all approved. We could have sent an email to someone or a letter, but that we, that we actually reviewed. And then there'll be a number of, that we actually approved, denied, closed out because we didn't get enough information. There's so many variables. So this is a very data-driven office and we're driving it off of paper and multiple Excel spreadsheets and very dated databases. So the numbers, I think, were very good considering our systems were down during the ransomware attack. We didn't get most of our data back until July 10th. So, you know, we had to go back and rectify everything we were doing without the databases. So it's, it's just been a process, but we're, we're managing.
We just had a hearing last night for the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission. And so that conversation is still fresh in my mind over, a lot of the times, the city auditor has been coming back with findings that show, that have issues with the performance measures. But the more conversations we have with different agencies, the more I'm beginning to think that we might need to have, and by we, I mean the council, might need to have a broader conversation with the Budget Bureau about the development of the performance measures. Because right now, that conversation seems to happen between the agencies and the Budget Bureau and then that's it. And it's not until two to three years later, when an auditor is reviewing that agency, if they have, they'll, if they're doing a performance audit of specific services, they will drill into the performance measures. But I'm wondering if there would be some way to have, as part of the budget creation process, maybe where we could include the council's budget committee, we could make certain that there were more eyes from outside on those performance measures as they're being brought in, you know, put together and included in the budget book. But I'm, I'm not going to hold you guys to that one for today. So I'm going to move on to finding number six about the list of waivers requested not provided. And you already explained that you are now, you're keeping that currently as a spreadsheet and you're looking for better alternatives. I was just wondering if you would just take a minute to brief the committee on the procedure for granting a waiver and how often do you feel, like how often are these waivers being granted?
So there are different waivers. So there is a pre-bid waiver where a bidder would submit a bid and there's a goal, let's say, of 10% MBE and 3% WBE. And there's a form that they could submit that they made their best faith effort and they could not find an MBE or WBE to perform that service. And so they request a waiver. And it's very rare that we accept those because the numbers are based on availability. However, sometimes an MBE or WBE may, the capacity, depending on the, on the, on the amount that we know that we have, they just may not be available. But I do reach out in those cases when I do get them. I mean, you'll have five bidders and everyone has someone but one, there's typically a problem. So that probably won't get approved because they could have reached out to the same people. The other bidders did. And then there is a waiver that we get, generally, Stephen Campbell works through a lot of waivers from the Department of Health for grants, to say like Johns Hopkins to serve some, the Ryan White AIDS grants. And so we'll look at the budget. We'll review the entire budget and if we feel there's an area where we could, MBE or WBE could perform, then we would recommend that they use an MBE or WBE. The issue we're facing there with the Health Department is that a lot of the, like Chase Braxton, they already have pre-existing relationships with vendors, but they constantly get money so, from the city, the grants. So it may be $3,000, and I tell Stephen all the time, it may be a $3,000 here over a $300,000 budget. It may seem minimal, but over time, all of the waivers start adding up. So we're working on some policy to say, okay, that's it now, but going forward, you know, you're going to have to start building the relationships, like the people that receive the grants, with vendors that are MBEs or WBEs. So we haven't started to deny them per se, but we do make a note. And sometimes I'll have Stephen ask and call the agency, who are they using? Is it an MBE or WBE? So that's a matter, I think, of changing the waiver forms that have been used and asking more questions and digging a little deeper with a lot of the recipients of the funding. So that's another waiver that we would receive. A lot of times, we've received the majority of waivers from the Bureau of Purchases for commodities. And so that's an area of Article 5 that I am working to, I noted that we're not doing for, for things that are 50,000 below. We shouldn't just automatically award. You're supposed to look at an MBE or WBE first. There's some documentation that's supposed to come back to us. That hasn't been a practice. I don't know when it stopped, but it is in the law, so we are going to do that. But we often provide a waiver for commodities. If you're buying batteries, an MBE or WBE, you can't segment that because the intent of the goal is for, to subcontract. And you can't subcontract batteries. However, you can, if it's a million-dollar contract, you can break it down and you can use multiple MBEs or WBEs prefer, you know. So there's, there's ways around that that we're looking into as well. And that would be another waiver. And does that cover it, Stephen? I think that covers.
MOHS.
Oh, MOHS. On the Mayor's Office of Human Services, we do get waivers from them. I have denied a few because, I mean, I question everything and how did this happen? How did you procure this? Who did you talk to? Why did it go this way? So I think there were two that I've disapproved this year. And MOHS will have mostly, what do they, what kind of services do they?
Homeless services.
What's that?
Homeless services.
Yeah, the homeless services. But we get the budgets. We get the full budget and we could see where the money is going in. Typically, it's for staffing, salaries, and so you can't segment that or either. So that's, that's most of, that's all of the waivers that we deal with.
Actually, specifically with, with, with those types of situations, if the way that a city agency is providing services is by contracting with a nonprofit, which I think by default can't be an MBE or a WBE. There is no flat-out, because this isn't going to a private sector corporation, it just automatically gets a waiver.
No.
Right.
No, no, we get the budget. So even though it may be a nonprofit, you're using cleaning services, you're ordering supplies with the money that you're getting. So we do not flat-out, we do not put that.
Wait. I'm sorry, so if, if I'm MOHS and say I'm contracting with, you know, you know, ABH, which is a nonprofit, to run a shelter. You would drill through that primary contract and you'd go check with ABH and say, so are you hiring, if you're hiring a private, you know, company to come in and do the cleaning, okay.
Yeah, if we see cleaning in the budget and it's $1,000, a lot of times, we will waive it because it's small. And that's the area where I was saying, it's, it's small there, but it grows over a year. It starts with 1,000 for that cleaning service, but over the years, it's a lot of money. So that's where we reach out to the agencies and ask them, who are they using? Are they using an MBE or WBE? Could they? Are they willing to? So it's not an automatic, if we see something in the budget that stands out, I mean, we, again, we do try to question everything and not just sign off on anything. And encourage them to use MBEs and WBEs. And I'm working on policy to almost give a deadline or change, where they'll need to submit who they're using and how they acquired that service. And the life, I mean, maybe they can, if they're not using an MBE or WBE, but they could be in a pre-existing contract. Once that ends, if they get money, funding again thereafter, then it should be with an MBE or WBE, so.
I had, I had two particular data requests in terms of numbers.
Okay.
Which were, how many waivers were granted in FY19?
It was...
And how many MWBOO vendors are there total in your database?
1,582 as of the date of that report. I think that, it changes every day. As far as how many waivers were granted in FY19, I looked at it before I came upstairs.
And that's okay. You can, you can send that to us afterwards.
Okay.
Send that to Sam and he can share with the rest of the committee and myself. And then the, my, my final set of pre-ordained questions was there was a disparity study published back in 2014. It recommended a set of measures that would be helpful. I'm just going to run down this list. Revise certification eligibility standards, adopt a social disadvantage test, adopt an economic disadvantage test, review firm size standards, which I saw out there, review the certification waiting period. the certification waiting period, permit individual consideration of business location, increase certification outreach, and consider reciprocal certification opportunities. Off the top of your head, do you know how many of these have been adopted?
That's the first thing I did when I took the office over, was looked at the disparity study to see where we were and what we've done. So, revise certification, what was that first one?
Revise certification eligibility standards?
I don't know what it was before the study. The eligibility is based on the constitutional, you know, race base.
Right.
Or gender right now. So, as far as revising the certification eligibility for race and gender, I'm not really clear. I'll have to look back at that one, what that would mean.
Okay.
And the social disadvantage businesses and economic disadvantage businesses, I think you asked about inclusive of those.
Adopt a social disadvantage test and adopt an economic disadvantage test.
So, this disparity study, if we can ever get it awarded, will actually, I've included disabled veterans, disabled veterans, and there was an executive order at the time, I guess when we were working on this with the LGBTQ community. So, this will be the first time that we develop anything related to socially disadvantaged or economically disadvantaged or disabled business owners.
And it looked like you'd adopted the SBA size standards.
Yes.
Okay. Review the certification waiting period?
I don't know how we could review that, so.
Let me, let me ask this, and this is one of the things that I know we had been talking about in terms of the code. And I don't, not so much in terms of the waiting period, you know, it's not about the waiting period, so we'll leave that alone. Permit individual consideration of business location?
So, I think that's related to potentially the virtual offices and those type of offices. And so, you know, the law says that we can look at it at a case-by-case or industry basis. And so, if you're, we do kind of look at that. Wendy will go out to a site, and some people are using a virtual office. Some vendors have come and said, oh, I heard if we get a space here, that we could, you know, get certified with the city. And so, what I tend to look at is, one, do you have an office outside of our market area when I'm evaluating that? How often Wendy will do a site visit? She shows up, is someone there regularly? She'll ask around, are they there daily? So, we look at a number of factors because we know that we're going towards more of the virtual office. But what I don't want to see is someone, which I've run into a lot from PG County or DC, coming to make money in Baltimore City that's not going to hire anyone here, that's not going to go to a restaurant here, that's not going to contribute to the city really, but just take and then leave, you know, with a lease for $100 or $50 for a desk that they're never in, just to meet the criteria. So, we certainly do a lot of investigating, very, very, very deep investigating for that.
Increase certification outreach?
So, if you will see, there were, we did about 21, this 21 outreach events this year, oh, this fiscal year, and I think the goal, the, was that, they wanted us to do about 15 or so, and the average was about 14 or 15. So, we were up to 21 events in fiscal year 19. So, we're certainly doing a lot more outreach. And outreach also includes like mass emails going out to the MBEs and WBEs, which we're working on a newsletter for the, before the holiday, when I was working on this instead. So, once we get that out, sending blast emails out, the Rashfield development was going on, and they were looking for participants. And I will sit and we will, I sent a blast out to every MBE and WBE. Hey, they're having a pre-construction meeting on such a day, and I heard the turnout was great with local businesses. A lot of the MBEs and WBEs were not used to getting those type of blasts. You know, they rely on the contractor, like Whiting Turner to send out that, but if you're not on that distribution list, and you're kind of a really small business, you're not going to get that. So, outreach to me is going to events, although I, you know, and they'll tell you, I don't like that. We have to do it because we have so much work to do in the office. Outreach also includes just sending out, when there's an opportunity, we're sending it out. I tried to start a, I'm starting a Facebook page just to send opportunities, so everyone just knows what's going on. There are so many opportunities for businesses, and I think the issue is they're just not aware of them, so that helps.
And then, the last one on that list is consider reciprocal certification opportunities. Do we already do that with any other subdivisions?
So, we did that with the state of Maryland, and it was called a reciprocal, but however, Maryland asked us to stop calling it a reciprocal and kind of put a, an alert out that it's not a reciprocal, because it's not automatic. So, reciprocity almost means almost automatic. But we did implement a shorter application where you require less information.
If you're already on the state's list.
However, we have to consider the strict scrutiny that is applied to this program, and the state has flexible goals. We have goals where we're going to get financially penalized. It's mandatory. It's not a good faith effort. So, we don't just take that, and a lot of people heard, hey, it's just going to take 30 days. We still investigate because what we don't want is to have a business in there that doesn't meet what the disparity study says, the market area, or, of some businesses, I have not certified that the state has certified, that I've found that a woman doesn't own it. So, we have more of a burden because we have a race-based only and gender-based program. The state has that, but they also have the DBE, and some of those programs are not specific, so you don't have that scrutiny legally, and so you have a little more flexibility. And they don't say, they'll say their goal is 16 and 10, but if you can meet it, you can, and if you can't, don't worry about it, you know? And so, it's a different program. Ultimately, I'd love to see the state have some sort of database where you can just apply like a college application. You go in and you can, if you qualify for certain jurisdictions, and do it all at once. But, you know, that's just me.
I just want to warn you that I have a daughter who's a senior right now. That's kind of a trigger thing for me right now, college applications. So, that's literally why I was late for the hearing this morning, Madam Chair, is getting some forms in that we're supposed to have already been in.
Dare you.
Yeah. The last, the very last question I have, going back to, you said that Baltimore County uses our list?
Yes, they do.
Do they pay us?
No, they do not that I know of. So, I thought maybe a MOU or something, because they do rely on our database when they're bid a contract. I think they use some other jurisdictions as well, but I know they do rely on ours.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. This hearing is adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation and your whole team.
Yeah. Yeah. I want you guys to visually see what I'm working with. Thank you.